It was cold, dark and quiet. Hours before dawn on July 18th, 2002, in Lithgow, New South Wales. Picture this: Endeavour Park, somewhere near the Great Western Highway. Then, a discovery that just shattered the stillness.
Yeah, really grim. Two dogs standing guard, you know, intently focused, anxiously watching over something. Or someone.
And there, found in a drain, lying severely injured, was a man. We're talking serious injuries, fractures, brain damage, horrific facial injuries.
He was barely conscious. The reports say he was only responding when medics applied painful stimuli. This is Craig Jackson.
It's hard to really grasp how bad his condition was right then.
Well, the initial medical assessment noted his Glasgow coma scale. That's the GCS, you know, the standard scale doctors use to measure consciousness. It was fluctuating between a dangerously low seven and eight.
Wow.
Yeah. And his extremities were cold, but his trunk was warm, which, you know, often indicates shock and maybe a significant lack of movement after a major trauma. He was described as combative, yes, but that wasn't him, like, fighting back consciously. It was more likely an involuntary response to the intense pain he must have been in. He was incontinent, too.
So this wasn't just a slip?
Oh, absolutely not, not a minor fall or a simple stumble. These were catastrophic, really life-altering injuries. They pointed to significant force involved.
But the big question, right from the start. How did he get there? The mystery kicked off immediately. He'd apparently left his home sometime around 3:30 that morning. The sources mentioned he'd been drinking and was noisy before he left taking his dogs out for a walk.
Okay.
But after that, nothing. Complete blank. He had absolutely no memory of what happened next, how he ended up in that drain in Endeavour Park. And it was a place his family apparently said he hadn't even been before.
So strange. And the dogs, while loyal, couldn't exactly tell anyone what happened.
Exactly, no human witnesses. Just Craig Jackson severely injured at the bottom of a concrete drain.
And look, this wasn't just some local mystery that stayed in Lithgow. This single incident triggered a massive legal battle. It consumed nearly a decade of court time.
Unbelievable.
It wound its way up to the District Court, then the Supreme Court of New South Wales Court of Appeal, multiple times, actually, and eventually, not once, but twice, all the way to the highest court in the country, the High Court of Australia.
So it became this huge deep dive.
Absolutely. Not just into the tragic facts of one man's injury, but deep into fundamental principles of law, evidence, and crucially, the burden of proof.
And the most incredible part, the thing that just blows my mind about this case.
Yeah.
This entire years-long, incredibly expensive legal fight, determining whether Craig Jackson would get compensation for these horrific injuries. It ultimately hinged on one single seemingly tiny piece of evidence.
A note, just a simple note, made by the very first ambulance officers who arrived on the scene.
Right, documenting what they saw, what they assessed, and maybe what they thought might have happened.
A note that would be copied endlessly contested and become the source of a genuine courtroom bombshell involving, and yes, you really did hear this right, a missing punctuation mark.
A tiny symbol, a single character on a page. Initially, maybe overlooked, then fiercely fought over. And it would completely reshape the path of this case. It fundamentally altered how courts in Australia treats certain kinds of evidence.
It sounds like a legal thriller, doesn't it? Where against all odds, punctuation literally became destiny.
It really does. So join us for this deep dive, because we're going to reconstruct the chilling events of that morning. But through the lens of the evidence the courts actually had to grapple with.
Yeah, we'll trace the journey through all the intricate steps of the Australian legal system. We'll try to understand the specific legal principles debated at the highest levels.
And we'll meet the key players. Craig Jackson, the injured claimant, Lithgow City Council, responsible for the park, the judges who made these critical decisions, and of course, the tenacious lawyers on both sides.
And we'll unpack exactly why Lithgow City Council v. Jackson is now a case you absolutely have to study if you're learning evidence law in Australia.
Our mission here is to unpack this incredibly complex case, follow its extraordinary journey through the courts, understand the legal arguments at every single turn, and explain its lasting impact on Australian law and how lawyers actually practice. We're going to show you how a question mark took a case all the way to the High Court.
It's quite a story, it really is.
Okay, let's get into it.
Let's do it.
Act One, The Scene and the First Loss. Okay, let's rewind back to that grim morning, July 18th, 2002. The sources tell us Craig Jackson left home around 3:30 AM.
Mm-hmm, classic Lithgow winter night, apparently cold, clear.
He was with his dogs, had been drinking, and was apparently being a bit noisy before he went out. Fast forward a few hours, the call comes into the ambulance service, 6:57 AM.
Right, they got to Endeavour Park pretty quickly by 7:07 AM, and they made contact with the patient, finding Craig Jackson down in the drain at 7:09 AM.
Endeavour Park. In the daylight, you can see why the physical layout became so important in the case.
Absolutely, that drain where he was found, it had a very specific shape, a configuration that turned out to be absolutely crucial.
How so?
Well, some sides of this drain had relatively gentle sloping banks. You know, maybe you could stumble or slide down those without necessarily catastrophic injuries.
Okay.
But one side was completely different. It featured a vertical concrete retaining wall, about 1.5 meters high, dropping straight down onto the concrete base of the drain channel.
With sheer drop.
Exactly, sheer drop. And the danger posed by that specific section, especially in the dark, and remember, the trial judge later found the incident likely happened well before sunrise in darkness was pretty obvious.
And the most vital piece of evidence, the one everything would eventually turn on, came from those very first people on scene. The ambulance officers.
Jay Godwin and M. Penny. They were the attending officers. They filled out the initial patient healthcare record, which is, you know, a standard document paramedics create. It documents the patient's condition, the circumstances they found them in.
And in that record, under chief complaint, they detailed his medical state when they arrived.
Yeah, decreased level of consciousness, responding only to painful stimuli.
Yeah.
They noted things like hematoma, that's a bad bruise, or blood collection abrasions, so scrapes, hemorrhage from his nose, those cold extremities, but a warm trunk suggesting shock, that he was combative as a pain response, incontinent, and his low GCS, seven to eight.
So meticulously documenting the severe trauma.
Precisely, it painted a clear picture of major injury.
And then comes the key part. Under the section for patient history, where they're supposed to record information about how the incident might have happened, comes the now infamous entry.
Okay, here it is, it reads, "Found by bystanders, Parkland. Fall from 1.5 meters on to concrete. No other HX."
Let's pause on that. "Fall from 1.5 meters on to concrete." It notes he was found by bystanders, sure, but it doesn't explicitly say the bystanders told them about a fall.
Right, the sources suggest this notation was probably the officer's own initial impression, maybe an inference based on everything they were seeing. His horrific injuries, his position in the drain, the sheer wall nearby.
And right there, at the very beginning of that crucial phrase, is the punctuation mark that defines this case. A question mark. "Fall." It signals uncertainty, a query, a tentative assessment, not a definite conclusion.
Hmm. And there was actually a second document, too, the retrieval record. This was filled out a bit later, back in the Pion Hospital by Vard Pierce and Scott Monroe, after Jackson was transferred from that initial ambulance crew.
Okay.
And this record also noted significant details. It said he was found 0720 unconscious in park at bottom of drain. It specifically mentions the one and a half meter drop. And it also notes that the police investigating the site found no evidence of fight. So the idea of a fall from height was certainly present in the subsequent documentation as well.
So this documentation, especially that first note with the question mark, immediately sets up the core conflict that drove the whole legal case.
Exactly. What caused Craig Jackson's severe injuries? Was it a fall from that dangerous unfenced 1.5-meter vertical wall onto the hard concrete base of the drain?
Or could it have been something else, maybe stumbling in from one of the gentler side slopes? Or maybe he overbalanced while standing near the edge of the wall?
And the fact that there were no witnesses, combined with Jackson's total amnesia about the event, meant the precise cause had to be inferred. It had to be pieced together from the circumstantial evidence, his injuries, his location in the drain, and potentially those notes from the first responders.
So we have our key players emerging. Craig William Jackson, the claimant, left with permanent severe brain damage, physical injuries, and that devastating trauma-induced amnesia.
Yeah, robbing him of any memory of the event itself.
And on the other side, Lithgow City Council, the defendant. The local authority responsible for maintaining Endeavour Park, now facing a claim of negligence.
Jackson's legal team argued the council had failed in its duty of care to people using the park. Their argument was basically, you left this sheer 1.5-meter drop completely unfenced in a public park people can access at night. The risk of someone falling was foreseeable, and you didn't do anything to prevent it, like putting up a fence or better lighting.
Makes sense. So the first legal battle kicks off in the District Court of New South Wales before Judge Ainsley Wallace DCJ. That was matter number 1111 of 2005.
Right. And Jackson's legal team, they were instructed by solicitors Gerard Maloof and Partners. They had the tough job, the burden of proving three key things for negligence, and they had to prove them on the balance of probabilities, meaning more likely than not.
Okay, what were the three?
First, that the council owed him a duty of care. That's usually pretty straightforward for someone who occupies land, like a council running a park.
Gotcha.
Second, that they breached that duty.
Mm-hmm.
So proving they failed to make that dangerous wall reasonably safe, for instance, by not fencing it or lighting it properly.
Right.
And third, and this turned out to be the absolute crunch point, causation. Jackson had to prove that the council's breach, the lack of a fence, caused his specific injuries. He had to show it was more likely than not that because the wall wasn't fenced, he tripped over it in the dark, fell that 1.5 meters into the drain, and that fall caused the terrible injuries he suffered.
That causal link.
Exactly, that critical link between the council's failure and his specific harm.
So how did the trial judge see it?
Well, at the trial, Judge Ainsley Wallace DCJ actually agreed with Jackson on the first two points. She found the council did owe a duty of care, and they did breach that duty.
Okay.
She specifically found that the lack of fencing along that dangerous wall, combined with her finding that the incident likely happened in darkness, made the risk foreseeable. And the council's failure to do something about it was a breach of their duty. So duty, yes, breach.
There's always a but, isn't there?
There often is in these cases. Here's where Jackson's case hit its first major wall, ironically. Despite finding the council was negligent, the trial judge was not satisfied that Jackson had proven, on the balance of probabilities, that his injuries were caused by falling over that specific wall due to the lack of fencing.
So the causation step failed.
Precisely. She looked at all the evidence presented, including those ambulance notes mentioning the potential "fall from 1.5 meters", but she essentially rejected those notes as being reliable proof of the cause of the fall itself.
Why? What was her reasoning?
She seemed to view that notation, especially with a question mark implicitly considered, as speculation. Or perhaps just reporting what bystanders might have thought or said. But crucially, not as reliable evidence proving how Mr. Jackson actually got into the drain.
I see, so even though the council was negligent in maintaining a dangerous park.
Yes. Jackson couldn't definitively prove that that specific negligence, the unfenced wall, was the reason he suffered those specific injuries in that specific way. The causal link in the trial judge's assessment just hadn't been established to the required legal standard, the balance of probabilities, more likely than not.
Wow, so what was the outcome of that first round?
The outcome was a verdict and judgment squarely for Lithgow City Council. Craig Jackson, the claimant, lost. His claim was dismissed entirely.
A devastating blow, I imagine, after years of living with those injuries and pursuing the case.
Absolutely devastating.
Act Two, The Ascent and the Revelation. But Craig Jackson and his legal team, still instructed by Gerard Maloof and Partners, they weren't giving up, they decided to appeal that decision.
Right, they took it up to the Supreme Court of New South Wales Court of Appeal. That was matter 400614 of 2007.
And the panel hearing, this first appeal, included some really heavy hitters in the legal world.
Definitely. You had President James Alsop, who later became the Chief Justice of the Federal Court of Australia, Justice Arthur Bastin, and Justice Graham Grove, a very experienced bench.
And their main goal in appeal was pretty clear, right?
Yeah. Primarily to convince the Court of Appeal to overturn the trial judge's finding on causation. Jackson's team basically argued the trial judge should have drawn the inference of causation from the other evidence available, or perhaps had just misjudged the significance of those ambulance notes.
Okay, and here's where the story takes a really unexpected, almost bizarre turn.
Mm-hmm. This is the crux of it. While the initial notice of appeal, the formal document outlining the grounds for appeal, didn't specifically zero in on the trial judge's treatment of the ambulance note as a distinct point.
Right.
During the actual arguments in court, before the Court of Appeal judges, the judges themselves became intensely focused on that very note, even though the trial judge had largely dismissed it as proof of causation.
Why? What drew their attention to it?
Well, this focus revealed a critical error, something almost unbelievable, really, in a case with stakes this high.
Go on.
The copy of the ambulance record that had been included in the appeal book, that's the big collection of documents the judges used for the hearing, had the question mark accidentally cropped off during copying or preparation.
Nooo, seriously.
Seriously. The version of the note presented to the Court of Appeal judges, under patient history, simply read, "Found by bystanders, Parkland. Fall from 1.5 meters on to concrete. No other HX." No question mark.
Oh my goodness.
That tiny, seemingly innocent omission changed absolutely everything for those appellate judges. They weren't seeing a tentative query or speculation like the trial judge had implicitly considered. They saw what looked like a clear statement, maybe even a factual observation or a firm opinion, "Fall from 1.5 meters on to concrete."
But the original note did have the question mark.
Yes, the full original record with the question mark was technically in the court file, held by the registry somewhere. But the working copies, the ones the judges were actually reading and relying on during the hearing, they lacked that vital symbol.
Unbelievable, so what happened next? How did they rule?
Based on this incomplete, faulty record, the NSW Court of Appeal handed down its first decision in 2008. Seeing the note without the question mark, the majority that was President Alsop and Justice Grove, with Justice Bastin agreeing with the president's reasoning on this specific point at this stage, they viewed it completely differently. They called it a crucial piece of evidence.
Crucial how?
They interpreted it as an admissible opinion given by the attending ambulance officer. And crucially, they held it was admissible under Section 78 of the Evidence Act 1995, NSW.
Okay, Section 78, you mentioned this earlier, remind us what that's about.
Right, it's really central here. So the general rule, Section 76 of the Evidence Act, says opinion evidence isn't admissible to prove a fact that the opinion is about. You need facts, not opinions generally. But Section 78 provides an exception for lay opinion. That's opinion from someone who isn't testifying as a qualified expert. Section 78 says evidence of an opinion is admissible if, one, is based on what the person perceived, saw, heard, smelled, et cetera, about a particular matter or event. And two, if the opinion is necessary to get an adequate understanding of the person's perception.
Like the example you gave, saying someone looked drunk.
Exactly, you can't easily list every single micro observation that leads to that conclusion, the slurred speech, the unsteady gait, the smell of alcohol, whatever. So the opinion, "He looked drunk," is considered necessary to convey the overall perception.
Got it, so the Court of Appeal, seeing the note without the question mark.
Correct, they treated it as the officer's opinion, based on perceiving the scene and Mr. Jackson's condition. They decided this opinion was necessary to understand the paramedic's perception of the situation, and therefore, it was admissible under Section 78.
And how did that affect the causation issue?
Well, now armed with this piece of evidence, which they considered crucial, and importantly, admissible, Court of Appeal looked again at causation. They acknowledged that maybe the other circumstantial evidence, on its own, might not have been enough to prove a fall from the wall.
Right.
But when they added what they thought was a clear statement and opinion from the ambulance note into the mix, they found that the combination was sufficient. It tipped the balance.
So they found causation was proven?
Yes. They concluded that, on the balance of probabilities, Craig Jackson's severe injuries were caused by a fall from the council's unfenced 1.5-meter wall.
What a complete turnaround, the exact opposite conclusion from the trial judge.
Driven fundamentally by how that one piece of paper was read, or rather, misread due to the missing punctuation.
So the Court of Appeal overturned the trial judge's decision on causation.
They did. They found Lithgow City Council liable for negligence. And they entered judgment for Craig Jackson. The amount was $203,475, plus interesting costs.
So Craig Jackson wins the first appeal, Lithgow City Council loses.
A truly remarkable turn of events. A dismissed claim was transformed into a successful judgment, all based on an evidentiary record that, completely unbeknownst to the court at that moment, was critically flawed.
Act Three, The High Court's Interjection. Okay, so Jackson wins the appeal, gets a judgment for over $200,000. You can imagine Lithgow City Council wasn't thrilled.
Not at all, they weren't about to just accept that loss. Instructed by their solicitors, DLA Piper Australia, they decided to challenge the NSW Court of Appeal's decision.
Where do you go from the State Court of Appeal?
The High Court of Australia. But you can't just demand they hear your case, you have to apply for special leave to appeal.
Right, you need permission.
Exactly, you need to persuade the High Court justices that your case involves a really important question of law, something of public significance. Or maybe it's needed to sort out conflicting decisions from lower courts. It's a high bar. The High Court only takes on a small fraction of the cases that seek leave. That High Court matter was S569, 2008.
And this is where the whole question mark issue finally comes to light.
This is the stage, it's where the now almost legendary courtroom revelation happened.
Yeah.
The council's legal team, led by Council Stephen Donaldson SC and Shane McCarthy from DLA Piper, were putting together their big application for special leave to file with the High Court.
Okay.
And as part of that comprehensive package of documents, they included a complete copy of the original ambulance record. And that complete copy, unlike the one that seems to have been used in the NSW Court of Appeal hearing, definitely, clearly, included the question mark. "Saw from 1.5 meters on to concrete."
So the High Court justices saw the correct version?
Yes. During the special leave application hearing itself, these hearings are usually quite short, the justices are trying to quickly assess if the case warrants a full appeal hearing. Later, the justices reviewed all the materials. They saw the version of the note the NSW Court of Appeal had based its decision on, and they saw the original correct version in the council's application book, complete with the question mark. The difference was right there in front of them.
What was the reaction in the courtroom?
Immediate, and by all accounts, pretty dramatic. It was Justice Hayden, one of the very sharp legal minds on the High Court panel, hearing the application, the full panel, was Chief Justice French, and justices Gummo, Hayden, Crennan, and Bell, who delivered the line that perfectly captured the issue.
What did he say?
Noting the discrepancy between the note the Court of Appeal relied on of the actual note, he apparently quipped to the council's counsel, words to the effect of, "A question mark is not an exclamation mark."
Wow, that says it all, doesn't it?
Perfectly. The NSW Court of Appeal had essentially treated a tentative query, a question mark, as if it were a definite statement and assertion and exclamation mark. This fundamental misunderstanding of a key piece of evidence was now completely exposed at the highest level of the justice system.
So what did the lawyers argue then?
Well, the council's team, Donaldson SC and McCarthy, argued forcefully that the Court of Appeal's entire decision was fundamentally flawed because it rested on an incorrect reading of this crucial note. They contended, the note with the question mark was obviously just speculation or a tentative query by the paramedic. It wasn't a firm opinion, and certainly not reliable evidence to prove causation.
What about Jackson's lawyer? Did they just concede the point?
No, not at all. Jackson's lawyer at this stage, Mr. Wheelhouse, instructed by Gerard Maloof and Partners, didn't back down on the note's significance, even with the question mark revealed.
What was his argument?
He argued that even with the question mark, the note was still admissible. He suggested the "1/4" simply showed appropriate professional caution by a trained paramedic who hadn't actually witnessed the fall, but was recording their best assessment based on the scene and the injuries. He maintained it still reflected their belief that a fall from height was the most likely cause, just expressed cautiously. He argued it still had probative value and should be admissible under Section 78.
So two very different interpretations of that question mark.
Absolutely. But the High Court was faced with an undeniable procedural error. The NSW Court of Appeal had made its decision based on an incomplete, incorrect version of the evidence.
So what did the High Court do? Did they just decide the whole case then and there?
They did something highly unusual. On October 27, 2009, the High Court didn't just grant special leave to appeal, which would normally lead to a full hearing much later. They granted special leave, and then immediately the legal term is "instanter", meaning right then and there, they allowed the appeal in part.
Allowed it in part, what does that mean practically?
It meant they didn't make a final decision on who won or lost the case overall. Instead, they completely set aside the NSW Court of Appeal's 2008 judgment, the one that found for Jackson. And they sent the entire case back down to the NSW Court of Appeal for a rehearing.
Back to the same court?
Back to the same court, yes, with a very clear instruction. You need to reconsider everything, start the appeal over, basically. But this time, make absolutely sure you were looking at the correct, complete ambulance record, including that crucial question mark.
Wow, so Jackson's win was just erased?
Completely erased, wiped out, it was a dramatic moment. It essentially reset the clock on the whole appeal process. It plunged the case right back into uncertainty, all because of that single, revealed punctuation mark.
So for Craig Jackson, it meant the fight wasn't over. He had to go back and argue the appeal all over again.
Exactly, back to square one in the Court of Appeal. The High Court basically hit the reset button because the fundamental basis of the previous appeal decision was shown to be compromised by a clear error regarding the evidence they'd used.
It really underscores how seriously the High Court views the integrity of the evidence that appellate courts rely on.
It certainly does. And it demonstrated in the most stark way possible that even tiny details, like a single punctuation mark, can have absolutely monumental consequences in the course of complex litigation.
Act Four, The Second Appeal and the Final Judgment. Okay, so the case goes back to the NSW Court of Appeal, armed now with the correct ambulance record, question mark and all. This rehearing happened in April 2010, still under the same case number, 496147.
And facing the case again was the very same panel of judges, President Alsop, Justice Bastin, and Justice Grove. They now had the task of reconsidering everything, fully aware that the note included a dusha.
So the central legal fight this time must have been squarely about that note, right? Specifically, was it admissible with the question mark?
Exactly, the debate focused intensely on the admissibility of the ambulance note, with the "hued" under the Evidence Act. Primarily Section 78, the lay opinion exception we discussed, but also potentially Section 69, which deals with business records.
Okay, break down the arguments for us, what did Jackson's team say?
Jackson's legal team, now led by a different senior counsel, AS Morrison SC, along with DW Elliott, still instructed by Gerard Maloof and Partners. It's interesting to note the change in lead counsel from the High Court's special leave hearing, argued vigorously that the note, even with the question mark, was admissible.
On what grounds?
They contended it was still an inference, an opinion, drawn by trained professionals, the paramedics, based on everything they observed at the scene. The patient's condition, the environment, the specific injuries, maybe the location of fluids relative to the different drain walls, the configuration of the drain itself. All observed data.
But what about the question mark? Didn't that show it was just speculation?
They argued, no, not necessarily. They suggested the question mark didn't make the note inadmissible, it just perhaps reduced its weight or certainty. It was still, they argued, the paramedic's opinion or assessment about the most likely cause, expressed with appropriate caution. And they argued it was necessary under Section 78 to understand the paramedic's initial perception of the whole situation.
And they mentioned the practicalities, too.
Yes, they highlighted the difficulty and perhaps limited value of calling the paramedics as witnesses years after the event. You know, memories fade, recollections become unreliable. They argue the note, captured at the time at a business record, which falls under S69, was actually the best way to get at their original perception.
Okay, so that was Jackson's argument for admissibility. What did the council's lawyers argue?
The council's legal team, still led by Senior Counsel SR Donaldson SC, with SE McCarthy, instructed by DLA Bupper Australia, maintained their firm stance. The note was inadmissible, full stop.
Why?
They argued the question mark confirmed it was speculation, not a genuine opinion based on sufficient observation to satisfy the rules. And even if you did call it an opinion, they argued it didn't meet the strict requirements of Section 78.
How so?
They stressed that Section 78 is for opinions based on what someone perceived about the event itself. The paramedics didn't perceive the fall, they only perceived the aftermath. That's a crucial distinction. And they hammered the point, that the opinion wasn't necessary under Section 78's definition. The paramedics could have, and arguably should have, simply recorded the objective facts they observed. The location of the body, the types of injuries, the presence and location of any fluids like blood or urine, the measurements and shape of the drain walls and slopes.
Just describe what they saw.
Exactly. They argued those facts could be narrated perfectly well without needing to include an opinion on causation from someone who didn't actually see it happen. They drew that analogy again to police investigating a car crash. The report details facts like skid marks, vehicle damage, positions, but doesn't usually include the officer's opinion on who caused the crash, unless they're qualified in giving formal expert evidence.
Makes sense. Did they address the business records argument, Section 69?
Yes, critically, they did. The council's lawyers raised a really fundamental point about Section 69. They argue that Section 69, the business records exception to the hearsay rule, only allows a business record, like the ambulance sheet, to be admitted to prove that a statement contained within it was actually made.
Okay.
But, they argued, Section 69 does not magically make that statement admissible if the statement itself violates another exclusionary rule of evidence, like the opinion rule, Section 76. You couldn't just use Section 69 as a backdoor to sneak in an otherwise inadmissible opinion. An inadmissible opinion doesn't suddenly become admissible just because someone wrote it down in a business record. It still has to satisfy the opinion rules, like Section 78 or Section 79, for experts.
That seems like a really important legal point.
It was huge, and ultimately, the High Court would agree with it.
So how did the NSW Court of Appeal rule this second time around, knowing about the question mark?
Well, in June 2010, they delivered their second decision. And perhaps surprisingly, the majority, President Alsop and Justice Grove, And perhaps surprisingly, the majority President Alsop and Justice Grove still found the note admissible under Section 78.
Even with the question mark?
Even with the question mark. They essentially accepted Jackson's argument that the just made the opinion less positive or certain, but didn't strip it of all probative force or make it inadmissible. They concluded that even with the note, when considered alongside all the other circumstantial evidence, was sufficient to prove causation on the balance of probabilities.
So they found for Jackson again?
Majority did, yes. But Justice Bastin, while also finding for Jackson overall, took a slightly different and quite important path this time.
How so?
He agreed the note was admissible. But he went a significant step further. He concluded that causation could actually be proven even without relying on the ambulance note at all.
Based on the other evidence?
Yes. He conducted a really detailed analysis of the other circumstantial evidence, things like the specific location where blood and urine were found in the drain channel. He noted it was 2.7 meters from that sheer western wall, but further, 4.5 meters from the northern wall, the physical layout of the drain, and the sheer severity and type of Jackson's injuries. Justice Bastin felt these objective facts alone strongly supported the inference that the injuries most likely resulted from a significant fall from the height of that vertical wall, rather than a less severe stumble down the gentler side slopes.
So he thought the case could stand even without the controversial note?
That was his view. And significantly, he explicitly stated he was reversing his previous agreement with President Alsop's reasoning on causation from the first appeal decision back in 2008.
Interesting divergence on the bench, but the overall result was the same.
The overall result was the same. For the second time, the NSW Court of Appeal found Lithgow City Council liable. The council had lost its appeal again, even after the High Court had sent the case back, specifically because of the error with the note.
You have to admire the council's persistence, though. What did they do next?
Well, Lithgow City Council and their legal team were clearly undeterred. They sought, and remarkably, were granted, special leave to appeal to the High Court for a final, second time. This was matter S66, 2011. This was it, the final showdown in the highest court in the land.
The legal teams must have been ready for a major battle.
Absolutely. Powerhouse lineups again. For Lithgow City Council, the appellant, it was still Senior Counsel SR Donaldson, SC, with SE McCarthy, instructed by DLA Piper Australia. They'd been with it all the way. For Craig William Jackson, the respondent, it was Senior Counsel AS Morrison, SC, with DW Elliott, instructed by Gerard Malef and Partners.
And the arguments presumably focused squarely on that note again, and whether the other evidence was enough.
Precisely. The admissibility of that now truly infamous ambulance note was the absolute key legal battleground. Alongside that was the crucial question. If the note is excluded, is the remaining circumstantial evidence strong enough on its own to prove causation?
So the final judgment, September 2011, what did the High Court decide?
The High Court delivered its final unanimous judgment. The panel was the same as before. Chief Justice French and Justices Gummow, Hayden, Crennan, and Bell. Their decision on the admissibility of the ambulance note was definitive, unanimous. They held the note was inadmissible.
Inadmissible, full stop.
Full stop. And they laid out exactly why in a judgment that has become absolutely canonical in Australian evidence law.
Okay, walk us through their reasoning.
First, they confirmed it was clearly opinion evidence, so it was subject to the general rule that opinions are excluded, Section 76.
Right.
Then they performed a really strict, careful analysis of whether it could fit into the Section 70 and exception for lay opinion. The High Court emphasized that Section 78 only applies where the opinion is based on what the person perceived about the event or matter. The event here was the fall itself.
Which the paramedics didn't see.
Exactly. They didn't see the fall. They only saw the aftermath. Furthermore, Section 78 requires the opinion to be necessary to obtain an adequate understanding of the person's perception. The High Court emphatically said it was not necessary here.
Why?
Because the officers could have perfectly well described the underlying physical facts. They observed the location, the nature of the injuries, the position of the body, the dimensions of the drain, the location of fluids. These facts were not, as the High Court put it, "too evanescent to remember" or "too complicated to be separately narrated", unlike, say, judging drunkenness or speed, where conveying the raw data is much harder.
Okay, that's a clear interpretation of necessary.
Very clear. And they put that final emphatic nail in the coffin for using business records to bypass the opinion rule. They unanimously held that Section 69, the business records exception to hearsay, does not operate to make opinion evidence admissible if that opinion doesn't otherwise satisfy the opinion rule exceptions like Section 78 or Section 79.
So you can't just smuggle in an inadmissible opinion because it's written in a hospital chart or a police report?
Exactly. That point had caused some confusion in lower courts before, and the High Court settled it decisively. It's a huge takeaway from this case.
Did they comment on the question mark itself?
They did. They also noted that the inherent ambiguity of the note, the presence of the question mark and its general imprecision, meant it lacked the kind of clarity and certainty required to be treated as reliable evidence of causation anyway. This further weighed against finding it admissible under Section 78.
So the crucial note was definitively out. What about the rest of the evidence? Could causation be proved without it?
The High Court then turned to the remaining circumstantial evidence. Could that alone prove causation? The majority Chief Justice French, Justice Hayden, and Justice Bell concluded it was not sufficient.
Not sufficient? Why not?
They went back to the fundamental principle of causation in civil cases. The plaintiff bears the burden of proving on the balance of probabilities that the defendant's breach caused their injuries. They carefully review the circumstantial evidence presented.
The drain layout, the injuries?
Yes, all of that. And they found that this evidence pointed just as strongly to other possibilities as it did to the plaintiff's theory of tripping over the unfenced wall. For instance, maybe Mr. Jackson entered the drain from one of the side slopes, or perhaps he overbalanced while standing near the retaining wall, or maybe some other mechanism entirely, not related to tripping over the edge because it was unfenced in the dark.
So the probabilities were essentially equal.
That's how the majority saw it. The evidence was evenly balanced between a cause for which the council might be responsible, falling over the unfenced edge, and other causes for which they wouldn't be. And when the probabilities are equal, the plaintiff fails. They haven't met their burden of proving their case is more probable than the alternative.
The maybe isn't enough principle.
Exactly. The majority was actually quite critical of the lower courts, meaning the Court of Appeal in this instance, for being, in their view, too liberal in drawing the inference of causation solely from those circumstantial facts. They demanded a more rigorous connection.
What about Justice Crennan? Did she agree?
Justice Crennan agreed completely that the ambulance note was inadmissible. On the causation point, she seemed perhaps a bit more receptive than the majority to the general idea of proving causation through circumstantial evidence, drawing a distinction between common sense inferences and mere guesswork or conjecture. But ultimately, she concurred with the majority's final conclusion on causation in this specific case.
So the final, final outcome?
The High Court allowed Lithgow City Council's appeal. They set aside the NSW Court of Appeal's 2010 judgment. And critically, they reinstated the original decision of the trial judge, Judge Ainsley Wallace, DCJ, from way back at the beginning.
Which me.
Which means Craig Jackson's claim was dismissed entirely.
Oh, wow. After all that, winning two appeals in the state's highest court.
He ultimately lost his case completely in the High Court. And adding significantly to the immense personal tragedy of his severe permanent injuries, he was also ordered to pay Lithgow City Council's legal costs, not just for the High Court appeals, but for all levels of litigation, going all the way back to the district court trial.
That's just devastating. A truly devastating conclusion to such a long, complex, and hard-fought legal battle.
It really is. A stark outcome.
Act Five, The Aftermath and Legacy. The human cost of this case for Craig Jackson is just immense. You can't really overstate it. Left with severe, permanent brain damage, life completely altered, and then facing enormous legal costs after battling through every level of the court system for nearly a decade.
It's profoundly tragic. And it serves as a really stark reminder, doesn't it? That the legal process, while it strives for truth and justice, operates under very strict rules, particularly around evidence and the burden of proof. And those rules can sometimes lead to incredibly difficult outcomes, even when someone has clearly suffered a terrible injury.
Absolutely. But beyond the personal tragedy, the legal legacy of Lithgow City Council v. Jackson is just massive. It's become a truly foundational landmark case in Australian evidence law.
Oh, definitely. It's cited constantly, especially concerning the Evidence Act 1995 in New South Wales and the uniform evidence law that applies in many other Australian jurisdictions too.
And its most significant teaching, the big takeaway, comes directly from that whole battle over the ambulance note, right?
Yes. The High Court made it crystal clear. Just as a statement of opinion is found within a business record, something covered by Section 69, like a hospital chart or an ambulance report, that does not automatically make the opinion itself admissible evidence in court.
It has to pass another test.
Exactly. To be admissible, the opinion itself must also satisfy one of the specific exceptions to the opinion rule, which is Section 76. The main exceptions are Section 78 for lay opinion, or Section 79 for properly qualified expert opinion. The High Court's clarification on this interaction between Section 69 and the opinion rules resolved a real point of uncertainty that had existed, and is now a fundamental principle taught in every Australian law school.
And the case also gave us a much stricter understanding of Section 78, the lay opinion exception.
It really did. It established a strict, narrow interpretation. Lay opinions are now clearly understood to be admissible only in quite limited circumstances. Primarily where it's genuinely necessary to convey a perception because the underlying facts are just too fleeting or complex to describe individually, like saying someone looks sad or a car was driving fast.
Not for causation based on aftermath?
Generally not. An opinion on the cause of an event based solely on observing the aftermath, like the paramedics did here, is usually not covered by Section 78. Because the High Court's view is the observer could and should simply describe the physical facts they actually saw.
So what's the practical impact of all this on how lawyers run cases now?
It's significant. Trial judges are much more vigilant now about scrutinizing opinion evidence found lurking within business records. Lawyers know they can't just tender a hospital record or an ambulance sheet and hope that a doctor's or paramedic's written note expressing an opinion on causation will just slide in as evidence simply because it's written down in the record.
They need more.
They absolutely need more. If that opinion is truthful to their case, they almost certainly need to call the person who actually made the note as a witness. That person can then testify about their direct observations and explain the basis for their opinion, which might then be admissible, maybe under S78 if it meets the test, or maybe just stick to the facts. Or even better, they need to get proper expert evidence under Section 79 from a suitably qualified expert who can provide a reasoned opinion on causation based on all the available evidence.
So it forces lawyers to go back to the source, essentially. Call the witness, get a proper expert report.
Yes. Rather than just relying on potentially ambiguous or speculative notes made by dizzy first responders in the heat of the moment, it's definitely raised the bar for relying on those kinds of statements found in routine documentation.
And what about from the perspective of tort law, negligence cases, proving causation? Did Jackson have an impact there too?
Yes, it holds considerable weight there as well, particularly regarding proving causation based purely on circumstantial evidence. The High Court's judgment really reinforced the rigorous standard required.
Which is?
It's not enough for a plaintiff's injuries to be merely consistent with the defendant's negligent act or omission. The plaintiff has to affirmatively prove, on the balance of probabilities, that the negligence actually caused the injuries.
That maybe isn't enough principle again?
Exactly. That principle from Jackson is often cited alongside other classic cases on circumstantial evidence and inference, like Jones v. Dunkle or Bradshaw v. McEwen's. If, after looking at all the evidence, the probabilities are just evenly balanced between two possible causes for the injury, one linked to the defendant's negligence and one not the plaintiff because they carry the burden of proof, will lose.
So plaintiffs relying only on circumstantial evidence really need to build a strong case.
They do. They need to present a case where their inferred explanation for the injury is demonstrably more probable than any other reasonable alternative explanation that doesn't involve the defendant's negligence.
What about defense lawyers?
Well, for defense lawyers, Lithgow City Council v. Jackson is a really powerful tool. They use it frequently to challenge claims they see as speculative, claims based on tenuous inferences of causation or attempts by the other side to introduce potentially inadmissible lay opinions hidden in business records. It has, in effect, made proving causation solely by circumstantial evidence, especially without direct testimony or strong expert analysis, considerably more challenging for plaintiffs.
And finally, that symbolism, the missing question mark, it really sticks with you.
It's so potent, isn't it? It perfectly encapsulates how absolutely critical attention to detail is in legal proceedings and how seemingly small technical errors, whether in copying documents, interpreting evidence, or applying legal rules, can have monumental, totally case determinative consequences.
It makes you think in our world today, we're constantly flooded with information summaries, notes, quick takes, headlines based on initial reports. But the kind of meticulous, almost microscopic scrutiny that was applied to that single line in the ambulance record in this case, culminating in multiple court judgments, including the High Court, it's a powerful lesson. In the world of law, unlike maybe in our everyday consumption of information, every single detail, every word, every symbol, is potentially subject to intense examination and argument.
And sometimes, as this case just dramatically illustrates, punctuation truly can be destiny.
Outro. So the case of Lithgow City Council v. Jackson, what an extraordinary narrative it turned out to be. From a chilling incident in a park, a man's life irrevocably changed, it triggered this epic legal saga, climbing step by step through the entire Australian court system, ending up not once but twice before the High Court. It spanned nearly a decade of intense litigation, multiple appeals, reversals of fortune, and a focus so intense it ultimately boiled down to the presence or absence of a single punctuation mark.
It really serves as such a powerful, and at times frankly heartbreaking, illustration of the strict rules that govern how evidence is used in our courts. It highlights that fundamental burden of proof that rests on a plaintiff in civil cases. And it shows the profound, almost unbelievable impact that a seemingly minor detail that question mark can have in uncovering flaws in how crucial evidence was being handled and interpreted at different stages of the justice system.
It definitely leaves us with a complex and maybe provocative thought to ponder. The law, quite rightly, demands concrete proof. Not just possibility, not just strong suspicion, but proof on the balance of probabilities. But when tragedy strikes and direct evidence is lost, maybe to trauma-induced amnesia, like in this case, or simply because there were no witnesses, how do courts truly balance that demanding need for legal certainty with the inherent limitations, the ambiguities that come with trying to reconstruct past events solely from circumstantial clues? It's a real tension.
It is. And maybe it poses a challenge to all of us too. As we consume information presented in reports, notes, summaries, whether they're medical charts, police logs, accident reports, even news headlines based on initial accounts, what responsibility do we have to really understand that crucial difference between a factual observation, a reasoned inference drawn from those facts, pure speculation, and a formal opinion? Especially knowing that those very documents might one day become pivotal evidence in someone's life-altering legal case.
That distinction is critical. The story of Lithgow City Council v. Jackson remains this compelling reminder that in the world of law, attention to detail isn't just important, it's absolutely essential. Every word matters. Every fact matters.
And sometimes truly punctuation can be destiny.
It's a sobering thought indeed. Thanks for joining us for this deep dive.